...area and having phone problems. Vice Mayor Loretano is on her way. She's, I think, caught in traffic. So we're going to start anyway at this point. So we only have one thing on the agenda tonight. I would like counsel, again, to refrain from asking questions until staff presentations are complete. I would like, what was the word you and I were talking about? If it's relevant to...
Relative breaking point.
How would you say that, Joe? Because you were helping me come up with this.
Relative breaking point, someplace where the topic is kind of shifting toward other...
So what we're talking about is if, my feeling is, if somebody has a question on a question that someone asked, rather than going to somebody else with another question, there might be two of you that want to join in on that same question. So that's all I'm saying. So you can keep it the way you are in your breaks, but I just want to make sure that the counsel here, to start with, somebody asks a question and you hear the response, but you want it a little deeper than that, or you want a little bit of different angle to it, could you express your feelings on that question at that time? Okay? All right. So the counsel will receive an update on the components of the performance management program, including the strategic action plans, next steps, performance measures, priority-based budgeting, Invisio, and lean implementation. Pam Weir, our Assistant to the City Manager, Kristin Williams, Executive Management Assistant, Mario Salamando, Executive Management Assistant, will present. Hello. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of counsel. Thank you for the opportunity for us to provide an update and some information around our performance measurement program. Before I dig deeply into the comment, I just want to sort of share the high-level, happy view of what we're about to present to you, and that is, as we engage in performance management work, we often communicate with cities around the country to find out who's doing what. And just a couple of weeks ago, we were invited by the Alliance for Innovation as the experts on performance management to share the story of the work that Goodyear is doing so far, and had the opportunity to speak to other cities in the valley, including Phoenix, Scottsdale, and so on, about the work that we're doing. So just want to pay credit to your leadership thus far in this journey, and we're looking forward to take it even further. So this evening, we have several components of our performance management program that we'll be presenting to you. First, I will be presenting a high-level view of our performance management program, the various tools and systems that are involved, and kind of what performance management means. Then I'll go into the upcoming work at the council retreat around the strategic action plan and the update that will follow the retreat. From there, I'll hand it over to Christian, and he will be covering performance measures, and then two of our assessment tools that we're currently using, both priority-based budgeting and Invisio. And then finally, Mario will take over and talk about our lean initiatives, and some high-level results and stories from the field of the type of work that our employees are doing around lean. And then we'll just wrap up with some next steps. So first, a general introduction to our performance management program. The question of why we do all of this comes up quite frequently. And, you know, fundamentally, we have a performance management program so that we can fulfill the city's mission as an organization, so that we ensure that the priorities of the community are pursued with the appropriate resources, and so that we're continuously analyzing and improving the work that we do. On the following slide, I'm going to share the various ways we carry out this program. Many of the benefits of successful performance management are seen on the slide in front of you now. The initiatives that drive us to continuous improvement, more relevant and successful plans and budgets, regular tracking of community priorities, monitoring of performance metrics, engendering a culture of innovation within the city, ensuring our resources are properly aligned with our goals, assessing our employees' performance, and ultimately building public trust through accountability and this continuous feedback loop is crucial. So to ground you in today's presentation, our performance management program genuinely generally follows the kind of plan-do-check-act model championed by Lean Process Improvements and DEMING. And there are four basic stages to this model. So the first, you have, you know, planning, then you implement, then you assess, and then you improve, and that cycle continues. So all individual projects within the city, as well as major citywide initiatives, can follow this cycle in one way or another, using a variety of the tools that you see on the screen. After the organization plans its work in several different forms, so this is, we have our citywide general plan at a very high level, that's the long-term vision. We have the council strategic action plan, that's about that three-year vision for the city. We have things like the People Master Plan and Human Resources that looks at how we plan for our employee resources. And then Department Strategic Operations Plans on a yearly basis, you know, ensure that the budgets are followed and that goals are met year by year. As we implement our work, we really focus on two things, project management and change management. So we ensure that milestones of the project are met on a timely basis and within budget. And then we also make sure that the organization and/or the community is ready for what's happening, so that it can be reinforced and that programs are sustainable. So as we assess our performance, we use a lot of different tools, and these are some of the things we'll be focusing on heavily this evening. We do general reporting, updates to you on, you know, any number of programs that happen throughout the year. Performance measurement, so that's the quantitative side of assessment. And then benchmarking, where we compare the work that we do to others that are like us or that are in our region. We do any number of surveys. Of course, we have the citizen survey, but we also do a lot of customer satisfaction surveys and things like that throughout the year. And then we have our major program of priority-based budgeting that Christian will be talking about, and a new program called Invisio, that's a new assessment tool that we are piloting this year, looking at how do we maybe better tie together all of the different components that you see on the screen. And then finally, your employee performance appraisals, looking at the individual level and assessing how work is progressing. On the improvement side, you're most familiar with our lean initiatives that have been going strong for a couple of years now, that we're very excited to show, share with you some successes there. And then we also do things like, you know, as counsel or as staff participate in regional events and conferences and training opportunities, we're consistently hearing about what's new in the profession, what's innovative. Sometimes we're inventing our own innovations and sharing them with others. And then stakeholder feedback, continuing to hear from citizens and you all, as well as the business community and so on, on improvements that would help us to serve them better. As those improvements take place, they feed back into our planning cycle and so on. So as we proceed through this presentation, we're going to kind of bring this up to ground you on where we are and how the tools we're talking about fit into this overall cycle. So we'll be starting here with the planning section, and I'll just give a brief introduction to the work that will happen at the council retreat around the strategic action plan, which is a key component of that planning initiative. So as you remember, your initial strategic action plan by counsel was adopted in 2013, April. It spans a three-year timeframe with annual reviews and updates, and it's aligned with the budget cycle. The strategic action plan that we have in Goodyear dives deeper than a traditional strategic plan. As you know, we have specific projects and programs outlined in the plan that counsel hopes to accomplish within three years. Your focus areas have remained consistent since 2013, those being what you see on the screen, fiscal and resource management, economic vitality, sense of community, and quality of life. And at the end of this week, during the council retreat, you'll have an opportunity to discuss and determine the future of those action items and goals that fall within those four focus areas. The outcome of that retreat will be determining how staff proceeds with an update to bring back to you all for approval. So I believe by this evening, all of you have now received the binder for the council retreat, and you will see Section 10 of that binder includes all of the materials related to your strategic action plan discussion. What we did to set you up for that discussion is rather than present the whole plan with all the updates and everything, which is a lot of great information, since we presented that to you just in July with the updates, we've sort of condensed the information into the actions that are currently in the plan for you to discuss and think about how you'd like to move forward. So you'll see really just three lists of action items with some dates and a little bit of information. But if you need additional information on an item, you can either refer to the complete strategic action plan update, or ask questions of staff, of course. So the three lists intentionally, excuse me, I already said that. So of the three lists, the first list is the items that are currently in progress in the plan, so they have a status of in-progress. And those items are going to be tentatively recommended to you to be continued in the plan, to be carried out to completion within their timeframe. The second list is items in the current plan that have been identified by staff as either complete, or have been identified as complete but ongoing for a considerable amount of time. So as we discussed in July, you know, those items that are complete or ongoing, while we tentatively recommend that they be removed from the plan moving forward, we are by no means saying that that work will be discontinued. So we're saying that those things have become operationalized in city departments, they will continue to be tracked at the staff level, counsel will still be able to request information on those programs as needed and updates. But the advantage to taking, removing them from the plan is that it ensures that your plan remains at that more strategic level. So it helps, it helps the community, it helps staff understand, you know, what are the key priorities? If we, if we continue to keep ongoing items on the plan, you end up with over 100 priorities, which we know, once you have that many, it's a less clear direction. And so by condensing to really those key items for the next three years, I think will help set that clear vision for you. And so we'll want you to consider, again, removing those items from the official plan document and allowing them to live in departments. And then the third list you'll see are items that are not currently in the plan, that have come up in recent work sessions, last, the last council retreat, other staff inputs. And that's a shorter list, but it's a list that we've documented that it has appeared that a consensus of counsel, or some strong feelings on counsel, would like to raise that for discussion. Now certainly know that none of those three lists are binding, and none of those three lists are intended to be dictating your direction. And so we merely offer it as a recommendation to help guide your thinking as you move through the retreat, and to sort of break it up into a few pieces. But any new ideas that counsel chooses to raise for discussion that aren't on the list, of course, are welcome to be included in that discussion. If you see items that have been suggested to be removed that you'd like to keep, obviously we can make those changes easily. So you will absolutely have the final say on all of those issues. And so at the end of the day, staff will see counsel direction on actions and goals that will remain in the plan, that would be removed from the plan, or that would be added to the plan. And that will let us, let staff prepare a fresh draft of the plan in its entirety for your adoption as soon as we can. So at this juncture, I'm happy to take questions on those first two subjects, either just performance management in general, or the strategic action plan discussion at the council retreat.
Questions? Joanne?
I have one. Thank you. I look forward to our discussion this weekend over the strategic action plan. One thing, though, that you did bring up here, I do think it's important to remove the items that have been completed, that, but we know are ongoing. What's funny is that I now, after being on this council for nine and a half years, I'm kind of looking at my sunset on council, and I'm looking at what is going to be important for the next council members, the next councils for the future, what's going to be important, especially since I can't speak up and say, oh, well, we did that, or this happened, you know, that institutional...
Well, you could.
Well, I could. I could be back there. Wait, wait. But, but anyway, you know, I look at it a little differently. And so one of the things that I had brought up about this ongoing strategic action plans is that even though these items may be removed from the plan itself, but having appendix or having something that said, these are items that have, because, you know, I could be new council member Smith that says, why aren't we looking at this? And because they have no idea, we've already, in the last five years, had it as an item. And so here it is, in an appendix, you know, just, it could be a single item and the date, and then they can go upon themselves, looking back at what occurred in that piece. But that's just something that I see, you know, just as when you became mayor and you said, what would I be thinking as a council member coming on board that I would find helpful? I think, to me, that's something that would be helpful for our next generations of council members. So I just bring that up as we move forward on that.
I'll chime in on that one. I absolutely have to agree with you, and I really didn't look at it that way until you just mentioned it to me. But whenever we get new council people on, this happens. And then even when this time, I know Bill sent something to me recently on one of his trips, he was about a partnership, and you sent me something, and I think I quickly answered you, we had that on a certain project. So those are the kind of things that might have been pertinent information for the council people. So I, I think you're right. I think as we start to move on from here, that we need to leave something that will give them that history. Otherwise, they're going to be, which we have already done, brought back the same ideas over and over. Now sometimes, the time could be right for an idea that wasn't at that time, so it's kind of twofold.
Joe?
You know, this is a very valuable, very important, powerful tool that you have. And I guess there's been a lot of hours and a lot of data that's been kind of generated, all this. From my perspective, I like the KISS method, to be honest with you, keep it simple. And here's why I kind of look at it, what I would like to see even included in the discussion, or even as we go through the budget process, high-level, and kind of piggyback a little bit on council member Osborne, is, as a result of all of this data, a result of all this manipulation of the data, of all of that you've learned as a result with our four main ten, by department, what have we done to make us more cost-effective, how we've improved our processes, again, an executive summary level, which can tie back into the detail, but how have we used this data, all right, to meet our ultimate goals and get specific examples by department? Because now you have the data, now you know how it's spending, all right? What have you done to either shift funds around, to put the priority where it can be better used, to maybe improve the health, welfare of our citizens, or improve their quality of life specifically? And I think that would be helpful, as opposed to just, you know, a lot of data and a lot of pieces on there. Does that kind of make sense? Am I, am I making my kind of thoughts clear on that? Okay. All right. Because to me, that would be helpful, as somebody sitting up here, kind of at the executive level, is, we've got it, we spent it, we did it. Now, as a result, what do we do with it? That's kind of where I'm at.
Sherri?
I think I agree 100% with everyone that spoke, and I think when we do the executive summary, we need to get that to our citizens. I think that's really one of the biggest pitfalls that I think we've had, and one of the biggest obstacles that we have, is our citizens don't know, they hear about these things kind of just generally, but they don't know the how it's making things better. So I think if that executive summary would boil it down, so people could say, oh, it's not just more government paperwork and more government plans, you saved money in this department doing that. So I think giving that executive summary and, you know, then getting that information out would be great.
Quick question, Joanne. Now, are you saying that as part of the strategic, I think I got lost, as part of the strategic plan, or as part of the performance measurements? Which one?
It's part of this whole process of the priority-based budgeting.
Okay. Oh, well, we haven't even started that.
Well, I mean, she's kind of hit it at the high level on some of those pieces, but what I'm talking about is...
The whole, just, gotcha.
Yes. I'm talking about the entire home, yes.
All of them are working together.
Yes.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, now I'm on board.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
All right. So as we move forward in our model, I'm going to be discussing the assessing section, which will cover three components. We'll have performance measures, performance measurement, which includes a lot of subcomponents, priority-based budgeting, as we call it PBB, and then a new tool that we're utilizing through a pilot process called Invisio. So I'll start with performance measures. So the city's performance measurement program, the main component, we call that city stat, was an initiative that counsel requested back in the summer of 2012. And since that time, staff has come back with progress on this program and how it's been evolving. The first time we brought this to counsel was back in April of 2013, then again on October 2014, and then you'll recall, back in March and October of 2015, we came back with some updates on how the program had been advancing. We began tracking for our first year performance measures back in July 1 of 2013. So our first year that we actually measured a complete fiscal year would have been fiscal year 14. And we have now just completed our fourth year of tracking, which is FY '17. These measures, we, as a staff, analyze quarterly, and we look for anomalies, and we discuss them with our city staff team members, as well as department directors. Performance measurements have also been integrated into the budget supplemental process. So as you may recall, within all the supplemental sheets that you all receive, we do include the performance measures we're utilizing for that. The goal of this program has always been to continually assess our performance measures, to have a clear understanding of what we do, why we do it, and how we do it, and also the services that we provide to the citizens, in a manner that meets the current needs, as well as future needs for the community, also working to maximize resources and be transparent with not only counsel, but with also the public and our internal staff members. As part of this transparency, we have recently produced a council summary report, which really focuses on the 56 measures that are most important to counsel. And we plan on publishing that on our publicly facing website, again, as we've been doing for the past three years, because we want to make sure we're being transparent with our public. And as the city staff team, we continually assess and evaluate the quality and the value of our performance measures, and the relevance of those outcomes. And the next evolution of this program is going to be really strengthening the tie of our performance measures with the strategic action plan. So that's the next evolution that we want to take as it relates to this program. The city has also been involved with ICMA, or, not for short, for long, International City County Managers Association. We've been involved with their Center for Performance Analytics Program. That's been called CPM 101, as you may have heard it referenced as, and also ICMA Insights. And that started back in 2012. Through that program, several cities, departments submit survey data to ICMA, and we really focus on the areas of facility management, fire and EMS, fleet, streets, human resources, information technology, parks and wrecks, hosted development services and development continuum areas, police risk and solid waste. And these measurements, in the past, had been integrated into our city stat reports. As you might recall, in the back of the very thick binder you've received in the past, had a host of those measures. But recently, we did find out that that program will be discontinuing this fiscal year. But Goodyear will be able to retain all the information that we submitted in the past, as well as the data sets that have been submitted to that program. So that is a plus. Luckily, we are still members of Valley Benchmark Cities. And Valley Benchmark Cities is a collaborative consortium of 11 cities located within the Phoenix metro area, as well as Arizona State University, the Alliance for Innovation, again, ICMA is involved in this program, and then Maricopa Association of Governments, or MAG for short. The cities that are involved in this program include Phoenix, Mesa, Chandler, Gilbert, Glendale, Scottsdale, Tempe, Peoria, Surprise, Avondale, and last but definitely not least, Goodyear. And this consortium was really initiated in order to improve local government performance and efficiency. Valley Benchmark Cities, we meet monthly with staff from various communities that I have mentioned, and organizations, and our topics are really centered around performance measures, performance management, and benchmarking. Compares our performance with our peer jurisdictions, and we try to do it on more of an apples-to-apples comparison, which is really helpful, actually, having this local group, because we're all local, we are influenced by similar state politics and different things like that. So it's been really helpful in tracking our progress in a more accurate manner. The emphasis for our meetings in fiscal year '15 had been to capture benchmarking data that was of particular interest to our 11 communities, and produce a more citizen-focused report, so that when that report is published, it's more understandable by people who aren't speaking government all day long, if you will. The group also examined following areas and collected data from the most recent completed fiscal year at the time, which had been '14. So the work in the current fiscal year is looking really at what just happened as, you know, June of that fiscal year was completed. We really took a close look at public safety, libraries, parks and wreck, streets, water, sewer and trash, also finance and administration. And as a result of the VBC report being published, our first step here at the city of Goodyear was to share that with our directors and our staff, so that they now have a resource that they can utilize when looking at making different decisions. And we also wanted to look at how we compared to our peer communities. And then you'll recall that we provided Goodyear with a copy of that report last year as part of this performance management program update. So we find that to be a pretty useful tool, particularly to have that benchmarking data in our back pocket. For this recently completed fiscal year that ended in June, the goal was to do a more of a comprehensive look at some of the service areas that we were discussing. So we, again, looked at last year's measures, we looked at some that we wanted to make sure we could trend and have trending data on, and we dived a little bit deeper into a couple areas. Of particular interest to Goodyear was public safety. So we wanted to take a little bit of a deeper dive and look at some of those categories. And then working with our public safety officials here in Goodyear, as well as some other cities that collaborated to get that information, we looked at benchmarking that data. Other cities also, and Goodyear, of course, had an interest in also looking at public safety, staffing levels, and economic development. So our goal is, we just recently, we're closing out, finalizing the report from this last year's work, so we hope to get that to counsel coming here probably in November. And then we want to finalize some of those deeper dive sections that we had. And then a future goal we do have is that, right now, we only have two years of trending data, because it's our second year we're going to publish our report, but next year we'll have a real, real trend, because we'll have three years. So we're really excited to continue working with this consortium, and it's become extremely valuable with the news about ICMA Insights. So with that, I'll stop here for questions and discussion from counsel.
Questions? Bill?
Christian, I think Joe hit on it earlier, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, and I had asked this question last week, the average citizen would, will ask the question, so what? So what does all of this mean? What does all this, what is this doing for us? We know that you're trying to collect data for the last couple of years, and this is a program we've been doing since 2012. I think that's the time when we started this, is that right? So we're four years into this now. So, so what? So what do we got besides Valley Benchmarking Alliance? What, what has this done for us? I think that becomes the bigger answer, that, and it's kind of rhetorical at this moment, unless you've got an answer, but I think what Councilmember Pizzillo was talking about was really, we've spent a great deal of time, and we've done a lot of analysis, and what, what have we done? What has that produced for us? What, what have we figured out? You mentioned that we use the key performance indicators to perhaps drive budget decisions. Is that, is that what I heard?
We do use that as a component within the budget supplemental process, yes.
Yeah. So, you know, that, that's one thing. I guess the other part of that is, are we using it, and how are we using it to drive day-to-day operation, day-to-day decisions? Not operations, but day-to-day, day-to-day decisions? Is it affecting it? I looked at the 55 or 56 that you sent, and some of them aren't really, they're, they're not driving anything for me, I guess. So I'm, if, if I'm the average citizen, maybe there's only 10 of them in the whole community that even care. But if I'm looking at that, I don't know what any of that means. So I don't know if there's a way that, as we produce the document for 2016, which you said you'll do for November, if there's a way to add that in there, to answer that. I don't know if there is or not. But I think that if we're going to spend this amount of time on it, and we're going to, you know, you guys are spending hundreds of hours, I can only presume, of the year, between the number of people on a team and, you know, meeting regularly monthly and the Valley Benchmark, we've got to be spending hundreds of people hours. We've got to be getting some value from it, and I think explaining what that is will be very important.
So Bill, if I'm hearing you right, tell the story.
Yeah.
Tell the story to the, I mean, I can, I can identify that from selling, okay? It doesn't have to be a huge, long story, it just has to have a paragraph or two of the benefits. It answers the question to the citizen, and in layman's term, what's in it for me? What good has it done me? And that's all. I think sometimes we look into a real complicated statistical answer, and I think what he's looking for, if I'm getting you right, is a conversational piece. It says, you know, such-and-such performance, I'd accomplish this, and you, the citizen, benefit from da-da-da-da. I just don't think it has to be really deep, but I think it has to have, have points to it. And so, Sherri, or I'm sorry, before I said that, you had your...
No, no, that's what I was saying before. I totally agree. I don't think our citizens, although you do a great job at transparency on just posting it up there, I don't know, your average citizen is going to look at 56, 57 points. I think Bill and what Joe brought back, it's just a really good point. It's just, keep it simple, high-level, you know, how did this help our city? What was good about it? So I agree 100%. If we could add that in, that would be great.
You can compare it to the editorial pictures. You just look what's going on in the campaign, and you see a picture. You... You walk away with that picture with almost a complete story of what's happened in that day in politics by the picture without a word on it. So what we're looking for is something is, 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 is as relevant as that in a short, concise paragraph that citizen would, would feel a benefit from. Sherilyn?
When I read the material, and when you said it again here, you said ICMA had gotten out of the business and that we would proceed with our partners to...
Sherilyn, can you bring that microphone over?
Oh, I'm sorry. Really, ICMA getting out of the business and that we were fortunate that we were in this partnership, that we could gather the data, similar data? Why did ICMA get out of it? Was it found enough people were doing it, there just was no point in their, the concentration in that area? Or did they find it maybe more cumbersome than effective? What, what, do we know what their motivation was?
Brian, can you add to it if they?
I don't have a complete answer for that. I do know that ICMA spent dollars on it. They also had a software provider that was working with them. So it was becoming more work, especially when you think about nationally and you think about more than 35,000 communities. So part of it was, is just really trying to make sure that there was apples-to-apples. And I'll quickly add that with our local benchmarks, it's a lot easier. Obviously, we're not doing snow removal and some of those types of things. So there's more apples-to-apples we're really trying to get a handle on. And, but the second part of that is, is there, there's a serious interest nationwide by ICMA and the professionals to do benchmarking. And it, and this was a bigger task than they thought, trying to do it at a nationwide level. So I think that's as much as anything as far as why they had to pull back. They're putting dollars into it, continue to put dollars into it, and, and they just saw that a lot more was going to have to be invested. So that, that's why they stopped at this point.
Much like cities do every now and then. Yes, anybody else? Joanne?
Well, I, I think that over the, all the years, we've benchmarked ourselves on many things when we're looking at, you know, payroll, when we're looking at insurance. We've, we've, you know, looked at what's been going on in, with those, you know, 11 cities we typically were looking at. But I think, I think as long as we're not benchmarking things, that it becomes a competition where it's like, oh, well, we got to pay more, our city has to pay more of this, and, and that city goes and tries to pay more, and, and that's all it becomes, is it's, it's a competition in a sense, rather than it's a, you know, very good information that we're all learning together and we're making ourselves better than it's just a, who can, you know, outdo the next, I think is, for me, the biggest win out of it, is how does it make each city become stronger and better, rather than just, you know, a competition of sorts.
Well, maybe what your dialogue is, is what we need to hear more often on that when we're presenting benchmarking. The benchmarking is good and it's a tool.
Right.
But what we're saying is, that's not the only tool a city has to make that decision. Satisfaction, culture, we have a bunch of things that, that we could put in that makes us stay where we are or add what we want to that benchmarking. Any other? Yes, Brian?
And I would point out that absolutely there's competition as a result of local benchmarking. But what, it, it's interesting, having sat through some of those, those meetings with the different managers as we get the results, is how are you achieving, you know, that benchmark? And then you begin to have the dialogue, what are you doing to have lower ratings or higher if it's a, you know, something better? A couple of things hit me, like diversion of recycling. We were actually a leader in that, and other communities said, how are you doing that? And you had that dialogue, then it had those staff levels to really drive that. Water, water consumption, some of those types of things. But then there are some things where it doesn't do an effective job of benchmarking, and that's where you really have to, it's, it's a number, but then you really have to look at it more, how are we benchmark against ourselves and trend against ourselves? So there's several, several tools as part of this.
And, and Brian, those were excellent examples because those are making the cities and the communities better, and, and those are things that we all want to strive for. So I appreciate those examples.
Anything else? Okay.
We'll move forward into the priority-based budgeting portion of the program's assessment. So city, the council work session in 2013, the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, long executive management from the city, came to present to the council at that time on the priority-based budgeting program. And at that time, council requested that staff make some additional presentations in order, and allow for more feedback regarding the attributes and the results maps, which I'll show you examples of what those are here in a little bit. In October of 2013, staff also provided a work session to council to review those attributes and results maps. And then council made some final recommendations on how to be more clear and, be more clear in what those look like. Just to give you an example of what, oh, I got a little scared there for a minute. Here's an example of our results map. So on the governance side, we have fiscal and resource management, and really the framework for these was the Strategic Action Plan that was approved back in April 2013. On the community-oriented side, we have sense of community, quality of life, and economic vitality. To be a little bit more concise within the priority-based budgeting model, we broke out two additional sections. So from items that are more relevant to public safety, we broke out safe community, which comes directly from our quality of life focus area. And then effective mobility and reliable, well-maintained infrastructure really touches on our public infrastructure, our modes of transportation, and that comes directly from economic vitality within council's results maps. And this is, these are really developed, just to be very clear, in understanding what we were measuring when we were looking at priority-based budgeting. Just to give you a quick example of what a results map looks like, we'll zoom in on economic vitality, and you'll see that some of the phrases here are verbatim of goals that you all have approved within your Strategic Action Plan under the goal section. And I do want to touch here and just say a little bit. One of them, for example, is focus on strategic economic development pursuits and initiatives that will increase local jobs and create demand for supporting businesses. So that's on the lower left quadrant. And I do want to touch on a cool, a few, couple, a couple of cool things that have happened in economic vitality in the last couple fiscal years. One, it's really awesome that the Harkins at Estrella Falls is now open. I was getting coffee today so that I didn't fall asleep today, and I saw a couple, they were wearing their Harkin shirts, so that was pretty exciting. But over the last four fiscal years, we've created 3,873 jobs, and that's, that equates to 697 million in capital investments. So that's just to touch on a few of the outcomes from our economic vitality area.
Now, that's something that citizens like to hear.
It's awesome, yeah.
Talk about that. That's an accomplishment to do this.
Additionally, when we look at the services that the city provides, we also want to look at them on attributes. So to touch on a few of our attributes, we have change in the, change in the demand for the program. So is there more of an increase or decrease? And, you know, some, some of that is attributed to population growth, some, there's different means why programs might increase or decrease in demand. Cost avoidance or efficiencies resulting from having that program, cost recovery of the program, our mandate levels, how much of the community is served, and the reliance on our, our city to provide that program. As you recall, we did have a council two-on-one sessions when we initially launched this program back in February of 2014, and we, we met with you as well as all the council members and discussed these, and you guys had a lot of good questions that came out of that. So what we as a staff did was we provided you with monthly data reports that started around April of that fiscal year. Those, if you'll recall, those focused, focused on the mandate level for the programs, the influence on economic vitality, the portions of our community that are served, the influence on sense of community, and also the influence on safe community. And in your retreat packets that you received, was it today? You should have copies of those programs or of those reports that we provided. The goal of PBB is, has been to continually assess the current 865 city programs in a manner that allows us to meet the current and future needs of the community while maximizing resources. In 2014, we did have 1,003 programs, and in fiscal year 15, we had 1,175 programs. And we've consolidated those, looking at, were we being too, were we breaking them down to levels that, you know, they weren't really programs and whatnot? So we did do some consolidation of the model. We also did look at the mandates and how we were defining mandates and how we were defining portions of community service. So we have looked at the model and made some minor adjustments. As of the FY '16 model that we, that the city received back in March of 2016, roughly three-fourths of the programs, based on total estimated budget, fell within quartiles one and two. So if you look at the spending, those direct costs of those programs, three-fourths were in quartiles one and two. And to, as a reminder, quartiles one and two mean that they are highly relevant to the results as defined by council, meaning these attributes that I just showed and also the results maps. And that's consistent with the results from FY '14 and '15. To kind of show you what that looks like here, I did a little graph here. So this shows that over the last three fiscal years, fiscal year 14 being represented in green, '15 being represented in red, and '16 being represented in blue, you can see that in quartile one, when you look at the spending on, in PBB programs, we've had between 34% and 37% quartile ones, of our city spending being in quartile one, and in quartile two, between 37% and 40%. So what this really showed, we wanted to do some analysis on, is it changing? Has it swung as we've been doing some updates to the model? And from our analysis, it looks like it's been very consistent, even with modifications in the programs and looking at mandates and things like that. So the data has shown to be pretty consistent throughout the years. The next steps that we see as it relates to priority-based budgeting is, we provided the reports for your retreat, and then council, you'll be having conversations with those. I believe it's actually on the 22nd of October, but it's for the October 21st, 22nd retreat. And we do want to touch here on, last section for program's assessment is on Invisio. So, Invisio, so this is actually really exciting. I'm really pretty stoked about this section. But the city, we were actually selected by the Alliance for Innovation to pilot a new tool called Invisio. And just as a reminder about who the Alliance for Innovation is, it's a, it's a group inspiring innovation and advancing communities with the help of Arizona State University, again, ICMA as well, and it's guided by research and real-world experience. And the Alliance impacts organizations and communities, and they want to challenge the way local governments perform and bringing value to all levels of organizations. And the Alliance tests new ideas and processes in local government and delivers actionable knowledge about critical industry topics. So they looked at Goodyear and looked at a lot of the work that we're doing, as Pam mentioned earlier about with our performance management program. They said, hey, Invisio, we think we know a community that would be a good fit for trying out this pilot, and we're pretty lucky, and I'm excited that we were actually selected. So, so we were, sorry, we lost my train of thought here. It also helped the way we plan our Strategic Action Plan, so that, this is what this tool also helps to do. And, sorry about that. So Invisio, let me tell you what it is. Let me just not read. Let me just tell you what this tool thing is.
Don't read your own thing.
All right. So if you look at the graphic on the left, I think this graphic really helps simplify what it does. I know the text is really small, but it, we took our strat plan and we broke it into the levels that it contains. So the top level, you're for council-focused areas. So we have fiscal resource management, economic vitality, sense of community, and quality of life. And those are all assigned to Brian, his awesome picture's up in the left corner. So this is a visual dashboard that I, as an employee, will see. The level below that are the council goals that you all have defined through the Strategic Action Plan update process. We have the actions on the third level, and I can actually see in this model, it's myself, the actions that have been assigned to me as an individual staff member, and then the planned activities that I'm working on to accomplish those. So the really cool thing about this is, is that we also have been able to tie in department plans. And the neat thing about that has been that we now, as staff, can see how the work that we're doing really contributes to the overall goals and objectives of the organization, and we can see how our individual pieces contribute to the success of the city. So essentially, that is one of the main functions of Invisio, is that it's a, it's a way you can plan and visualize what, what, what work we're doing within the city and how we're contributing to those. So that's just a quick example on the left, showing kind of what that looks like.
And tracking as well?
Oh, yeah, so, exactly. So in this pilot, what we, it also has, is has a user-focused dashboard. So as an example, we wanted to really reduce some of the steps, particularly as it relates to performance measures reporting. So we're able to embed the performance measures into this tool, and then they're linked to the goals and actions that council has defined. So it's really easy for staff to read. This is, again, just a quick screenshot. On the bottom right, it kind of, it, it shows the progress that we're making as it relates to those actions and those planned activities. So it tells us which ones are in progress, which ones have been completed, which ones we have discontinued. So we can see that status, and then we can also report on, are these at risk? Are they on target? Are we, are these future items that have been defined and the date is upcoming? So it gives you a very cool visual and a dashboard that we can report on. And the cool thing also is, right now, when we want to produce a report, you know, we go, we, we all track things in different mechanisms. So I'm an Excel guy, so I have to go and put my Excel into Words to make it normal, people-friendly. And we have Word documents out there and PDFs, and the cool thing about this tool is that it's all very consistent. You figure out which level you want to report on. If you're having an internal team meeting, you can pull up, you know, maybe the planned activities that are in progress for that week. So it really makes it very staff-friendly but easy to report up. So it takes those, the bottom-level activities that we're working on as team members, and it rolls them up to that goal and focus area level. So that's some of the exciting things that this tool is really helping us do and really saving time. I've gotten a lot of emails this week. Performance measures aren't the most fun emails that people get sent from me about, hey, it's time to do your performance measures. But this week, I actually got some positive, we got some positive feedback. They're like, it was so easy to go in Invisio and, and put our performance measures. It saved time. So that's the real cool thing about this tool, is that it's very user-friendly and intuitive versus the boring Excel sheets I send out to, to track that information. The next steps as it relates to this is, our pilot actually officially began in April 2016. We were going to pilot this for one year to April 17. And then as of this month, we have trained all of our staff members on how to utilize this tool. The training actually was pretty easy because it's, it's almost like click and, click and type, or if you have a new goal or a new planned activity you want to use to complete that, you type it in a little comment box essentially, and it populates and it's all linked together. So that's the, the fun of that. We're also updating our new department plans. In that tool, we have a Blaze, our city manager's office intern's helping us update those, and he's been breezing through them because it's very user-friendly. And then we would like to produce an executive-level report for council in February. So again, this quarter, we just started using the tool, staff's getting familiar with it. When this quarter ends in December 31, Happy New Year, we're going to, we're going to start the reporting. So I'll go in as a staff member, talk about, you know, what I've done. It's actually a dashboard view of mine, so I can see the planned activities I have. I'll go in there, I'll comment on those. It goes right up the food chain to the next level, the, the owner of that goal and that action, and then it consolidates into a real cool report. So the cool, the really awesome potential of this tool is how easy it makes reporting back and tracking your progress. Yeah, absolutely.
So I'll make everyone nervous and improvise for a moment, but based on your comments earlier about the sort of what's in it for me, so what, kind of mentality, one of the, the real things that we're optimistic about using a tool like this, and there are lots of tools out there that do, do things like this, but what we're hoping for is, you know, currently our performance management program has these multiple components and so on, and I really focus on the Strategic Action Plan. Christian really focuses on the performance measures. Our departments have all their activities. In order to tell these stories effectively, we really need a centralized place where we can contain this information. We need our measures to connect directly to the work that we're doing. We need our council-focused areas to connect down to what an individual employee's performance appraisal looks like. And so this is really driving our efforts to create more value to you all and to the public and to be able to tell that story and do it in an efficient way. So it's not, you know, every time we need a newsletter update, we have to call and email six different people and update three different spreadsheets. Now we have this opportunity where we've decentralized reporting but centralized the, the database by which we can pull information. And so we're hopeful that as this pilot completes and we get these first reports to you, we'll find that being able to tell those stories does not create a lot of overhead time in the process.
All right, questions?
No, no, I'm just looking forward to when we get that next level step because, as I piggyback on what the mayor said, when you... I piggyback on what the mayor said, when you're out there, and again, you're spending a lot of time, effort, data, um, manipulating a lot of the information, and the bottom line is, is for each department, how they become more efficient, how they created their own internal funds. As a result, how's the tie-in and, and, um, the life, uh, and making, um, the benefit greater for our citizens? That's kind of what I'm zeroing in on. So, and, and again, for them, the numbers and the spreadsheets and all that, they're not going to know what they're looking at. But if you can show, for example, as a result, there was two programs in the police department, because of the dollars that were spent was not getting the results they wanted, so they shifted those same monies to another program, which is much more successful. As a result, we didn't need any more money, but we got it to stretch our dollar more by creating those internal funds. They would understand that. So that's kind of where I'm kind of coming from.
That's a story.
Yeah, that's a story.
Any other, can you add a comment? Go ahead. Uh, Bill?
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Bill.
Let Joanne go first.
She had two thousand. Go ahead.
All right. Um, I've, I've had some difficulty, um, articulating, I guess, my points over the last couple of months. So I took the time today and wrote out some thoughts on the PBB. So bear with me, I guess. Um, you know, PBB came to the city a number of years ago. Uh, Joanne and I attended a session at the NLC, first learned about, uh, PBB, thought it was a good idea. We've had some conversation with the manager and the staff. And, and here we are today, you know, four years later. I thought I understood it fairly well, um, but in recent years, um, that proved frustrating. And I thought perhaps I was misusing or not understanding how PBB really pertain to the city council's role, um, in, uh, bu, in budget development and just understanding of it. So based on my being unsure and really not being confident now of my own understanding of how we should be using PBB as a council, I went to the PBB conference this past August. Um, I learned a number, learned about a number of enhancements that have been made to the program and also learned that it is now available through an online portal as opposed to us sending them data and then them sending the information back. They also, for me, reframed parts of the conversation to include integrating the community through the elected officials into the decision-making process. There are very simple charts, um, in the analysis tool pack, which they have that illustrate at very high levels how we spend our money. But really, before I go on, I really need to kind of clarify something. This is not a, um, I'm not playing a gotcha game or saying I'm smarter than anyone else. I'm just trying to share what I know with the rest of the council, um, so that we have similar materials and a similar understanding to base our collective decisions on. We're supposed to talk about this on Saturday. This is the precursor to that. We all have our strengths and, uh, and expertise that collectively make us very strong as a council. Um, and that is my one and simple motivation, is that's leveling the information playing field. Tab seven of your book that you theoretically picked up today is the section on PBB. It outlines the programs and spending from 2014, which is three budgets ago. The pages are filled with a lot of tables and a lot of numbers, and it's very hard to make, make a comparison between our stated priorities and our spending. If you look through that, you'll be drowning in numbers. Um, we've all stated at one time or another that transparency is very important to us, and I'm going to say the gang here tonight has said, "We're really trying to get transparency moving forward." PBB is a tool that allows that, that transparency and provides for the required oversight that we have been elected to provide. As a council, we have no place in establishing the type or the quantity of printer paper that is being used, or whether we should offer two or twenty finger painting classes. That's not our role. But I would suggest that we should know how much of our budget we are spending on the priorities that we've set. And that's that colored charts. The Center for Priority-Based Budget has created a series of charts that show elected officials how their budget compares to what they've created our five policy questions. One of the questions for quartile one challenges the mandate portion and asks, "Is this a self-imposed mandate and there is, and is there someone else who could provide the service?" We don't, that's one of the questions that we, we should be asking. Uh, and again, that's just one example. Overall, overall, I would like to see what, how the current spending compares to those policy questions today. They have created the policy questions for the decision-makers. I would like to see them presented, um, with all of us. Um, and it is available in the online portal. Additionally, the portal provides a very simple chart that shows how our spending compares to the council-adopted community results. Economic vitality, infrastructure, safe community, quality of life, sense of community. These are also detailed in tab seven with the colored circle charts that Christian showed earlier. Each area's got a different color. And they have been adopted by us as our priorities. So I'm going to estimate, based on the chart that I have seen, of what we spend our programs on that have a strong contribution to the community results. And this chart is based on 2016 budget information. We spent forty million dollars on economic vitality, thirty-eight million dollars on infrastructure, thirty-seven million dollars on safe community, twenty-five million dollars on quality of life, and about eight million dollars on building a sense of community. One of the biggest things that this council has been saying for years that is very important is our sense of community. And that gets the least priority funding. So even though we've got quartile one and quartile two and quartile three, we're not getting the true understanding of how, how that money is being spent.
What was the quality of life one?
Uh, twenty-five million quality of life and eight million on building a sense of community. So I, I guess I have to wonder, am I the only one who wants to know how this breaks down? So I guess that's a question for us as a council. Um, if I am, then I guess I'll have to take my numbers and go sit in the corner somewhere, but, um, but, and realistically, before I get kind of accused of torpedoing these questions tonight to make a point, I want you to know that I asked these questions last week and was told very specifically that the analysis of the five policy areas were originally presented to council in 2014. This information is being included in the binder and other supporting materials the council will receive over the weekend. While, while we are not specifically showing the tool and the data, we do show historically the number of programs by quartile from inception of the program in 2014 to date. The quartile discuss, discussions only tell a part of the story, and it's a part that we, as a group, seem to generally focus on because that's what we know. We know priority one, priority two, priority three, priority four. We don't know about the rest of the stuff. So there's nothing else for us to focus on as a council. But now we have the ability to see at a very high level what it, what it really means to our residents. So I ask, do we want to see it? So in the end, I guess, if we're supposed to be providing direction for the future, setting the stage for next year's budget discussions, and more importantly, establishing strategic priorities for our future, I, I ask, shouldn't we have the complete picture and a solid understanding of what that all means? All of these tools tonight provide that for us, the foundation. PBB is just one of them. And the information that we've got in that tab is volumous. If you have not looked at it, because you just picked it up today, it is huge. Um, and I think there are simpler ways of showing that. As Joe pointed out earlier tonight, we can do it in a single photo, talk about it, understand it, and then we can move on. But we can't move on if we don't understand it.
Comments?
Sure. Go ahead.
I, I, not really. I mean, any further information? I haven't looked at it yet. You know, but any, I just picked it up, but I'm just trying to flip through and so.
I haven't had a chance either. I just got it.
So, any additional information?
I have one question on it, though. Um, when your figures is, it's, and, and the public has asked me that when I've had a conversation. So they said, "Okay, I just don't understand why you have quality of life and sense of community." To me, that's all one. And I get that comment over and over and over again. And, and so I, I come home and I look through it, and they have a valid point on that. So if you put those together, then we're spending pretty much equal. We have them separated in it, but, but the, the amount of money is just about the same as that forty and forty on the infrastructure. And so that's how I look at it. Uh, and to try, and I've come home and really gone through a lot of information to try to decipher the difference, but it doesn't happen. It's an emotional overflow into the other one. So, so I think, I mean, I feel, in my opinion, is that is a com, we're accomplishing what we want there. And it's equal to the, the infrastructure and active.
But aren't you assuming that you know what's in sense of community and what's in the other one?
Well, my public has a sense. They have a sense, and it's like anything else, Bill, when you sell a product. I sell a product to someone, and I have twenty different impressions of what that product does for me and how I feel about it. So I'm, I'm judging this off of everything we've done that we've talked about. Uh, and the public keeps coming back with this. And I think, I think they cannot come any higher on either one of these because they blend them together. They just, sense of community and quality of life, it just doesn't. And, and even, even other council people have asked me that. Other mayors have asked me that. Uh, Joe?
Yeah, I can see where they overlap, but to be honest with you, I can see somewhat of a difference. When I see, uh, uh, quality of life, you know, I see, uh, amenities, I see security, you know, I see things that I can do, restaurants and that type of stuff, places where I can take my kids if they get hurt. And when I see sense of community, you know, I think of events. I think of things like the Fall Festival. I think of things that we do that bring everybody from the outside to one location to celebrate the city. They may overlap, but I, but I can see some differences in there. That's how I would explain the sense of community. When you bring gathering, large gatherings together to celebrate an event, our Fall Festival, what is it, the thing at Halloween, the Christmas thing, um, when we have events at the ballpark, uh, whether it's art or whatever, to me, that's kind of a, a, you know, you know, the sense is a flow.
I totally agree with you.
But, but I, but I can see the, yeah.
It also is, when you look at that.
Right.
That's a quality.
Yeah, but I, but I can see, I can, I can see, I can see a little differentiation between the two. But I can see where they can be combined, you know, as well. But, but I can, I can see some specifics, uh, on how you make them.
Well, they're both emotional.
Yes.
Uh, any other comments? Joanne?
Well, um, I, I, I think Bill's presenting a discussion about the tool itself. And, um, you know, it's funny, just, just last week at the Harkins opening, it was really cool to have, you know, Mr. Harkin there and, and talk about the innovation of, that he was bringing to Goodyear and the fact that this was, you know, um, all these great attributes of this theater being here that's none like others in Arizona. And, you know, I said, "Well, isn't it perfect that you brought to the innovative city your innovative, you know, theater?" And so, um, a, and I think that's something that's always been cool about our city is that we have been willing to take risks in innovation. We hope they're going to work. Sometimes they don't. And, and we move on to, to the next thing. Um, PBB, I think, was a tool at a time that we have been searching for answers to some of our, um, financial issues. And, um, and I still believe that it is a valid tool to use. Uh, I think that PBB has been innovative in itself, and it has made other tools that we can look at it in another way. And so if Bill's saying, because I don't know, if Bill's saying there's a new way that, that PBB, um, as a council, we can look at, and it's broken down into those ways rather than just in quartiles, then we should look at that. Because I think that helps us make better decisions. When we're being able to look at the picture in a different way. And at the end of the day, why are we looking at that? Is it because, you know, I know, I know I've always wanted to lower taxes. Bill has been looking at ways that where can we be fi, financially, um, better? Well, we've got some big decisions to make in the future, don't we? We have some positions that are going to have to be for police and fire. We're going to have to build some, some facilities that we want, and we're going to have to fund all that. So if we're looking at all of these things, maybe in a different way, it helps us, you know, make a better, a better decision. The one thing that I look at PBB that I question about how Invisio works with it, and I remember this from the very beginning when PBB came into play, and that was with quartile one and two. And I remember at the very beginning, it was stated that quartile one and part of two were mandated items. But in those mandates, we found that we were the majority of our own mandates. There were only some that were national. There were only some that were state, but it was items that we've mandated upon ourself. So is Invisio the tool that can look at those mandates that we've put upon ourself and see if they are actually performing to where they should be, or should they be sliced and diced, and now we find more money that can be put to something else, just as Joe stated? So that is how I see this. Now, Bill, am I missing something? And what, and, and I know how passionate you are about PBB. And so at the end of the day, what is your thought that you want to see the outcome of PBB doing for us?
Well, I think I, you know, I stated earlier that PBB just makes us smarter, collectively smarter of where we're at, and allows us to walk into the community and answer the question. If you, your question, Georgia, about what's the difference between sense of community and quality of life, it's in the, it's in the maps. It's in that tab seven. They're, they're spelled out what the difference is. And for us to be able to say, "And this is how we're funding those things," because Mr. and Mrs. Smith, that's important to you. And at the end of the day, you, you know, you said, you know, PBB is just a tool, and we've got challenges ahead. And if we understand how it's all laid out, maybe those challenges are very, um, maybe they're, they're, they're simple, that there is no extra money, and we're going to have to forge, we're going to have to forge ahead. Or perhaps it's going to require some difficult work, as Joe suggested, that we're going to have to rob from Peter to pay Paul to get this to, to be done. We don't know. That's the problem, is we're, we're supposed to know and we don't. And, and I think PBB will provide that for us. So at the end of the day, it may be, we've, we can, we can cut a hundred programs out because they're not serving any of the needs. We just do it because this is what we've always done, and that will save us money. Or it, we, we could shave off of five hundred programs, and we'll still never save enough money to do the things that we need to have done. We just don't know. So until we know, the discussions that we have about filling buckets for, um, you know, future, future needs for this, or fu, it, it's a, it's, it's kind of, we only have half the information.
We should see it.
So it's, it becomes emotional at that point. And that's all I'm hoping. And that's, you know, does it come up tonight? Should it come up over the, at the retreat? I don't know. I mean, I just, I flat didn't know what we were even trying to accomplish tonight. But it sounded like this was supposed to be high level. Let's get it out there. This is a high-level thing then. I'm just getting it out there.
It's time for everybody to think about it.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
That, that was pretty much where I was.
Okay, all right. Where are we now? Mario?
Well, good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. The, uh, the final portion of the presentation focuses on lean. Uh, there are a number of lean initiatives, um, that have been completed here at the city, or there are many others that are in progress. Lean has been with the city for about two years. And so this is a great opportunity just to share some of those, uh, lessons learned from, from the lean program. Um, just circling back on this, um, performance cycle, um, you know, the over, the cycle itself models the plan due check act, which, that's also, uh, very consistent with lean thinking. Uh, and another point to make on this slide and the overall program, uh, the program includes a number of different key elements, like the operating plan or the general plan or surveys. These are, uh, performance measures. These are good platforms to call out services that are falling short of the target, um, or that, uh, well, basically, um, services that we can look at to, uh, increase the value of that service and make the, make the program better. So, you know, it's, it's within the overall program. Lean contributes just like all the other different initiatives that you've heard of, um, heard about tonight. Um, Invisio, PBB, these are all different elements that make up the overall program. So Goodyear's lean culture, as, as we all know, people are at the heart of any operation, and, uh, lean is, can empower workers and teams. Uh, Goodyear has spent a lot of time training and upscaling our employees, uh, about lean. Uh, in 2015, uh, the city developed an introduction to lean and started to train all of our employees. And so to date, more than ninety percent of our employees have completed this training. So this is a way that our organization distinguishes, distinguishes itself in terms of hiring best and brightest and really addresses that competitive workforce issue, recruitment environment, or recruitment issue that, that many cities are currently struggling with. In fact, it was the, the Phoenix Business Journal recently had an event, it was last week, and the companies were discussing workforce challenges. And those companies, several of them mentioned the importance that innovation and empowerment have on recruitment and, and retention. have on recruitment and, and retention. So lean is one way to help us get there. And it's through this philosophy of creating mutual trust and respect, a focus on continuous improvement, that, that can create a culture of, of empowerment where workers are driven to, to creative solutions. Just really quickly, we, we have three types of different lean initiatives here at the city that help drive our improvement process. One model is called Just Do It, and it's fairly small in scope. Looks, looks at things in the immediate area of an employee's, of an employee's work area. So anything that is directly related to the person's job, if it's not, if it's not costly, if it's the right thing to do, our employees are empowered just, just to make it better and just do it. The kaizen is a larger effort, three to four days, requires a facilitator, includes a number of different departments to weigh in as stakeholders. They all touch that process related to that city service. So it's a specific purpose that's called out. And I'll be talking a little bit about some of those examples a little bit later on in the presentation. And also, a project is similar to the kaizen where you're looking at a specific process or service for improvement. But it's, it's really not set aside to, to, to discuss, you know, over three to four days. It takes, you know, the group can meet on a regular basis over several months just to keep kind of chipping away at the existing service, you know, and how we can, how, what can we do to improve that service? And, and I'll be touching on a few of these examples right now. So this is, this is a look at the Fleet Kaizen. So this looked at basically the process related to maintaining city vehicles. And it included representatives from parks, human resources, police, fire, engineering, city manager's office. This was actually identified as our, in the 2014 employee survey. It was identified as a service that could be better from that internal service delivery standpoint. In twenty, fiscal year fifteen, thirty, thirty-six percent of those vehicles were maintained in the month that it was scheduled to be maintained. And so the kaizen occurred at the tail end of fifteen. And the process really brought these different stakeholders together to take a look and see, you know, what is the process to schedule that vehicle and complete the maintenance in a timely way that the department can get the car, the vehicle returned so that we can start maintaining these vehicles when they're supposed to be maintained. And so it really revealed some areas that, that could be improved, that touched the process with regard to scheduling, communication between the different departments. And so, you know, long story short is, you know, really updated the, the standard work associated with maintaining those vehicles, made changes in the way that those vehicles were scheduled, the dashboards were created, sharing the, the status of, of the vehicles and where they are in the process, improvements to communication via email and text. Those have also, those have also been ways to help improve the process. And so in fiscal year sixteen, that, that basically target is now sixty-two percent. It's not the target, that's the actual. So in sixteen, they bumped it. They doubled it from thirty-six to sixty-two percent, and they're on target right now. The city is, it's the Fleet Department to really maintain or service ninety percent of those vehicles in the month that they're scheduled to, to be maintained. And on the right, there's another measure that came out of that Fleet Kaizen, and it was basically to complete the work within two days. And so in sixteen, seventy percent of those orders were completed in, within two days, within forty-eight hours. And then they're on target right now to hit seventy-nine percent. So it's, it's one example of how that, you know, three or four day effort can really call out areas that aren't working and figure out ways, working with the different departments with regard to increasing the performance related to that service. So this is the HR Kaizen. And this also, you can see the number of different departments that really were, that participated in that effort. Human resources, city clerk, finance, legal, engineering, parks, IT, public works, city manager's office. So the purpose was to address vacancies in the organization. And, you know, vacancies can have a, a negative impact to, to the organization. So there's a desire to streamline that process and really put tools in place to improve service levels. So some of the improvements that came out of that four-day effort was an improvement in recruitment and selection, which is self-scheduling. So it would take, it used to take staff approximately fifteen minutes per candidate to schedule that interview. And so just by changing the process and going to self-scheduling, so now applicants can go online and there's a system that's set up where they can basically schedule the appointment that works for them. And it's really basically shifted that to, to the applicant. So it saved the, the human resources side of the equation. It's a hundred and twenty-seven hours to date, and it goes back, I think it was October of last year. So it's about year-to-date of data, fifty or so positions have been kind of through this process. And you can see by making some changes with, with regard to recruitment and selection, it's really, it's really saved and created capacity internally. And so the personal action forms and the new hire paperwork, those are also steps in the process that could also be shifted or, or basically performed differently. And so, you know, the one way was for personal action forms, the process was paper, and required routing throughout the city for signatures and approvals. And you can see by creating, working with IT to create this electronic platform, it's, it's electronic. So basically, it's, it's really saved approximately fifty-two days of, of wait time, you know, as that, as that documents routed throughout the city. It's, it's no longer in that state of, that idle state. And it's the same with the, the paperwork as well. So the new hires used to basically come in on their first day and basically complete all their paperwork. And systems have been created so that they can do this basically on their own time. And it's really creating that internal capacity on, on the HR side of things, saving twenty-seven hours to date. So I won't read all of these, but just some examples of the Just Do-Its and the different projects that have also occurred over the past eighteen months. One was on the utility billing side of things. This, this was really behind the process that is related to calling the city and asking about the high water consumption for that month. And so, you know, a team got together and from different departments, public works, finance, city manager's office, and, you know, looked at all the steps and figured out kind of what, what the role was, what the role is for each department. That finance has a role, public works has a role, the utility division has a role. And how can we simplify that? And so one of the, basically, you know, the team goes through this exercise and figures out, you know, where those steps add value and where they don't. So the process has been updated so that it, you know, no longer, it used, it used to take up, it could take forty-five minutes for the customer to schedule an appointment with a field representative to, to basically go out there and take a look at the water meter and see if there are problems on that end. And, you know, now it takes on an average of five minutes. So there are just ways to streamline and figure out kind of the role that each department has in the process, who should be out in front. And, and also empowering those employees who are on the front line to make decisions and to answer questions and follow up and address that concern so that you're taking out some of that, some of those steps that don't, that don't need to be there. The, the last one is on the employee career path. It's just kind of a different take on lean. It used some of the lean kind of concepts to take a look at, at this issue, which again, on the 2014 employee survey, sixty-four percent in public works rated continuous learning and development as good or excellent. And so that was a mark that public works wanted to address. So they worked with the human resources department, and they developed a, a career program where twenty-one employees have been trained as facilitators. And it's really kind of taking this A3 problem-solving approach, which calls out current state, you know, the future state, where, where would you like to be? And, and the steps to get there. So just, it really kind of calls out integrity, innovation, those values that the city is, holds very near and dear. And it really provides this, this program to help employees develop professionally, add value to the department, add value to the city. And so it's just by kind of taking some of those concepts that are kind of ingrained in lean and really applying it to not only city processes, but just, you know, where, where do we wanna get better? Where's the problem? Where do we want, you know, where can we improve? These are examples that it just help you get there. Let's see. So again, some more examples of some of these, some of the, so the work that's, that's been completed. Construction meters could take two weeks to issue that meter for a construction project. The process today takes two to three business days. And it's the same with the single-family residential meter as well. That, that process was also cumbersome, and it's also been simplified. So new utility accounts, that's also been a process that, let's just do it. It was, you know, what, what process, you know, what is the process today for a new customer to sign up for service? Some of these systems that were there were based on an environment, technology where, that were restrictive. Those conditions don't exist anymore. So, you know, it's just by taking a look at that process and figuring out, in this case, work was completed with the IT department so that employees could sign up for service online and just simplifying that process. So it's taking a look at kind of the service, how we're delivering it today, and figuring out, you know, better ways of providing that service to our public. So tremendous amount of credit on these last couple of slides to all these departments and employees and leadership in those departments to really get behind and figure out ways of providing better service to our customers. We wanted to share some of the work that is occurring along the, the development continuum. And economic development, development services, engineering staff been working on a number of initiatives to improve city services and create a business-friendly culture image. So this mission statement was presented to the city council back in May of this year. And it focuses on, partly on collaboration and empowerment, which are values that are associated with lean. And so when discussing this in April with staff, these departments, really, the ratings and the feedback fell behind some of the other values. So collaboration and empowerment scored behind some of the other values with regard to how accepting is the culture around empowerment and collaboration. And so that same discussion was, took place several months later in August, and the scores improved. And, you know, it's partly because of, you know, the, the teamwork around a lot of the, the lean initiatives. It's partly because of the leadership. It's, you know, success is rooted in, in, in culture. And developing culture takes time. But, you know, if there's support that is in place for employees to work together as a team, figure out better ways of, of delivering that service, trying things. And just back to what you were saying, Joanne, with regard to, you know, testing things out and seeing what works and, and, you know, what we can try differently to, to hit that target. So if that culture is there, then you start to kind of have more momentum from, from everyone who's really taking a look at these services and how they're being provided. This, so this, a couple of examples of some tools that are in place in planning and engineering. So these are dashboards, and they are basically presented in, in the department electronically on monitors. But they really call out, so the engineering production board on top, it calls out kind of the status of the different projects that are in process. And, and below is a planning production board that basically calls out the projects that are in process. And, you know, when is that, when is that project due back to the customer? So the board on top is actually a process that feeds into the board on the bottom. So it's kind of an internal measure that feeds into the overall timeline associated with getting that project back to the customer. And then, and then, of course, you can turn these into some, some charts that help call out performance. And these are discussed on a regular basis with deputy city management and department heads, managers, staff to get in front of areas and to also, you know, celebrate, you know, different things, different projects that have, that are, that are continuing through the process. So just a couple of examples of, of different tools that are in place that just help track and communicate status to the various stakeholders who all touch that project throughout the continuum. And when you ask Christopher, you know, it's how did you, how did you get, how did you get there? He, you know, he talks about listening to customers, again, aligning that mission and vision with the city's overall philosophies, creating dashboards and communicating. There are a number of different discussions that occur throughout the day with the management line. And just to talk about kind of, you know, where's this project, running into some issues on this side of things? How can we help you? This other department will jump in. I can take this. This person's out today, I can jump in. We can do that. So there's just, there's better, there's, communication's been, it's really been enhanced. And it's really, it really is related to some of the, some of the wins that we see along the development continuum. Problem solving as a team is just, you know, it gets, gets back to collaboration and empowerment. And, you know, if, if you look at problems as opportunities, it's, that's the way to, to look at it. And it's basically, it really kind of enhances that teamwork with regard to problem solving. This slide is, it's called, it's noted as a mission moment, and it's an example of, you know, a win. So this process, let's see. So this is an email from Myra Russell, who is a Development Services Tech Three. And the email is a shout out to Angie Cosia for the, for the effort behind improving the process for all the building safety, construction drawings, so that plan review process. And so just to paraphrase, I'm super excited. We were awesome this week processing all plans out through nine-twenty-six. There's no backlog, which means, you know, no, nothing is sitting there idle. So they're in a position to stay on top of this, and they're, they're not anticipating any backlog moving forward. And it's really, it's really a, a nice kind of shout out or summary of a process that's working well. You know, this was a process where the, the different team members got together and, you know, there was a certain performance that was being hit, and it could be improved. And so it was just a matter of figuring out different ways of doing things. And this is kind of a testament to performance moving forward. And, and you can kind of really get a sense of the culture and kind of the positive work that's being completed in, in those departments. Because that, again, touches all of these different departments in, along the continuum, economic development, engineering, and development services. So just moving forward, we're just getting started. We, we have been working on lean for two years, but it's, it's, there are a lot of lessons that we're learning as we're moving forward. It's, I think, moving forward, you know, right now, we're using our performance, overall performance program to identify kind of where we can look at different services to improve. performance program to identify kind of where we can look at different services to improve. And, you know, we've talked a little bit about strategically, you know, how can we focus in on those city services that, where we'd like to. And so, you know, there's an ambassador team that's in place and Pam is heading that up and we'll, we'll figure out, you know, where, where, you know, what lean looks like moving forward. But we continue to, again, you know, take a look at these processes, we'll move forward with Kaizens, Just Do It and projects as well. So.
Questions? Sheri?
First of all, just want to take a moment to thank all three of you for your presentations and all the hard work that you and all your teams did. That was just absolutely very informative. That email made me laugh. I mean, that is just, that's a really good shout out. And a lot of, what I was talking about, one of the, get the information to the people and some of those little blurbs, some of those little blurbs about lean, you know, we save this money, that's what I really would like to see really get out, like the executive summary, to some of those high points. Because there is a money savings there, there is something for our community to, that we can say we've saved money. It's not just, we're just not a bunch of bureaucrats making up more policies. These are actually changing how procedures go and saving money and time and resources. Like Joanne said, that can be used for other needs in the community. So I want to thank you for it and I really like those shout outs. I wish, just let's try to get those out too, you know, when we get those, those wins, you know, not just let the people in the department know, but, you know, maybe let us know, send that email to us, you know, because I would like to be able to say, hey, I don't know if I'd use the kick butt, you know, but, oh, kick star, kick star, sorry. But, you know, get those out and I'd like to be able to say, oh, well, did you know that, you know? So great job, thank you.
Carolyn?
I just had a question about it, especially when you get emails like that and you talk about empowering the employees. When will we have a, I think this would tie to employees' appreciation of their job. I think we should see some kind of difference perhaps when we do our employee survey. Is there any gut feeling for that, that there is a more ownership and more enjoyment in their job when they're feeling empowered and they're actually being successful in providing a better customer service? Is there any gut instinct in that and when do we, would we have that survey? I should know that, but I don't.
Yes, absolutely. You can glean through the questions, the surveys that went out to our employees. We are in final draft now, where we'll be working with the directors and we're looking at, very similar to what we provided council in the employee survey that was finished in 2014. We, you will be getting a very, almost an exact copy of what we gave you back in, as a result of the 2014. And I believe we're looking at, is it November, December? I'm looking over at Lyman.
November the 7th.
November the 7th is when we're planning on having a summary of the results to council on the employee survey. So it'll, it'll have some of those elements in there.
And has some of this been in place so that it would reflect in this? Because I don't know how long then the time development is in this survey. What, is it enough, has this been in effect long enough that there, it will reflect in this particular instrument?
Here we have it, we have an answer right here.
Let our human resource director, Lyman Lockett, hit that. This is our second employee survey we've done, but I'll let him get more detail.
Sure. As we speak about benchmarking, this is our opportunity to benchmark. Our employee, thank you. Actually, I don't know whether leading up or spinning over is better, but in either case, this is our opportunity to benchmark our performance over our survey that we did two years ago. So we will have some comparisons available for you on key measures, specifically the key measures that we set out to focus on. So there were four of those measures that we put a lot of energy and effort into over these last two years and you'll have that data available in that report.
Last year, whoa, I didn't realize how close I got to the mic. Last year, we received two versions of the survey. One was the summary of some key areas and then much later, we received the entire survey results. Can we just kill one step and get the whole survey first?
Yes, sir. You'll get both in the yellow paper. You'll have the survey data, full survey data, and then you'll have the comparison information within the yellow paper.
Thanks.
Joe?
The survey data, Lyman, is that, is that done on the outside?
Yes, it is. We contract with National Research Center, who also does our citizen survey. And one of the reasons that we utilize them is they allow us to benchmark against other communities. So it is done outside by a third party.
So the data is coming directly from them?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Sheri? No? Joanne?
I'm done, Lyman, thank you. You know, I just wanted to say this was, I think lean shows value most of all. Value that is understood and it's actionable changes that makes sense. And it's things that make sense to the general public. And I agree, Sheri, that this is kind of the stories that people would love to hear, you know, and, I mean, you can make it as fun as, you know, you want it, even in the in-focus of just showing, you know, just as large corporations improve their processes, so does your city of Goodyear. And just showing, this, these are the things that have changed. Now, I am going to throw one monkey wrench into the vehicle lean process and that is that I would like to see the car washed every time that it goes through maintenance because, I'm sorry, some of our cars are just really bad. But I think this is fabulous. Well, I think I was in the other car and it was, you know.
I lost my car washer.
It would be, would be a nice thing. And, and I think that it's great. I think the team atmosphere is wonderful. I think these are the ways that a lot of things get fixed. And just empowering our, our staff to be able to do things is crucial.
I, I'm always on the emotional side of this, okay? So if I were on the team and somebody asked my opinion and had me be a part of some activity, that would be exciting to me because I would think that you're talking to me, but you're going to listen to me also. So the exchange and the conversation is very exciting and it makes them feel like they are part of the team. Because when you're a staffer, I won't use Gary, Gary Gelsers talk, remember Gary? And remember everybody was here? I won't use that expression. But the fact of the matter is that you have a director and you have your employees underneath you. And so there's always that separation, no matter how you try to form it. But when you can bring them together and you teach them something, you teach them a common language, you're teaching them something new, I just think it's, I think it's just great. You're just really, as you say, empowering them and you're giving them another career path. Now, I happen to be very fortunate as the mayor because I stand up on the GEO and I talk to each of the employees that come in, the new ones and the ones that are being promoted. So I get the stories and I get to see the sense of pleasure on their faces that they are going to be able to stay with our city. I don't care what level it is. And so, so you don't get that benefit, I do, and it's just glorious. And, and I hear over and over how great it is to work for Goodyear. So when you're making changes like this, in my view, you sometimes think, oh, people don't want to do it. Change is hard and sometimes they fight change. We all know that. I have the same problem with certain things. So the fact that they've made that change and the change has benefited them and that you're listening to their feedback and allowing them to say how they feel that, I think is just really great. And so people leave our city, they leave for different reasons, but we're making it hard for them to leave. They may leave for a little bit of higher payment, you know, they might leave some of that, but it's going to be hard because you're building a structure that truly works. Any other comments? Are we, where are we now?
So I will quickly wrap us up here. You can go ahead. Thanks. So your comments are very well received this evening. I think, you know, we've continued to evolve each of these individual pieces and now really our work moving forward is bringing them together and incorporating all of those stories into a cohesive image and a, and a what's in it for everybody. So our next steps upcoming in just a few days, we have our council retreat. Of course, the strategic action plan and priority-based budgeting are agendized items for discussion, as well as a number of others on your agenda. Following the retreat, date to be determined based on your direction, but we do anticipate updating the strategic action plan and getting that adopted to council as soon as we can. And then as far as the Invisio tool is concerned, our first executive report, we anticipate coming out February of 2017. Our departments are going live with that program in just the next couple of weeks to start recording and tracking all of that information. So thanks very much for feeling energized and it was great to present to you this evening.
Thank you. It was, well done, well done. Just give them a hand. And Mary, I want you to know that Brian's assistant, Mary, put those books together. So everything that's in there and how well organized it is, pat her on the back when you're up in the office, okay? Anything else, any agenda?
Mayor and council, I do have a, just a couple of items to just mention some activities that are coming up. So just real quickly, one is, and we'll, we'll give more information on this, but on the Goodyear Community Health Park, we won that award, as you're aware, that was by General Electric. And last week, the mayor, a few of city staff and representatives from Abraza West Campus, Cancer Treatment Center for America, Adelante, and then John Kuhn, we were invited back. General Electric's dime, by the way, they paid for our flights, our lodging, our food. Pretty, pretty amazing trip. We spent three days at their leadership development campus, which is pretty remarkable. But short story is, we're one of nine areas in the country that won this award and they rolled out the carpet, meaning General Electric, with thought leaders from around the country that want to work with us over the next year. So yes, we get $25,000 for, toward our project. We also have an opportunity to get additional dollars, pot at the end of the rainbow, we call it, $250,000 that would be then available for some or one of these nine groups. So we're excited about that. We will be coming to council on November the 21st to talk about the governance, as I've talked about in one-on-ones, and a little bit more about our experience with General Electric and really what, what we're looking at going forward. But tribute to Pam and also Christina Plant that did the application for this city and supported by, by our private sector partners as well. As a reminder, it's been talked about enough, we will start our annual retreat, 1 o'clock this Friday and it'll be right here. And then that'll go till 5:00 and then Saturday, 9:00 to 1:00. I know several of you are looking at hitting the Make a Difference kickoff. So if you are, that starts at City Hall at 7:00 AM, Make a Difference Day kickoff. So it's the largest national day of community service where volunteers around the world unite in a common, common mission to improve lives of others. So a few words from Mayor Lord and council members at 7:15, followed by a big group photo. So if you're there, bring your smiles and there's a, there are a lot of activities that are going on this year for Make a Difference. I won't go through those, but it's, seems to be bigger. It's our biggest Make a Difference in Goodyear yet. It'll be 15 projects that'll be going on this weekend. And then as a reminder, the Fall Festival, busy Saturday, I know, at the Goodyear Ballpark and that's from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. And you've been given information on that, I won't go through all the details, but it is, it's our, goes from 5:00, like I said, until 9:00 PM. And really a lot of kid activities and that's what it's about. So that's all I have in terms of announcements. And then regarding the work session itself, thank you very much for the comments. We appreciate the dialogue back and forth, the questions, the concerns, the accolades, all of those are well received. So thank you for your support.
Anything else from anybody? I just want you to know, we worked hard while we were in New York. They had us up and out at 6:00 and we didn't get back until late and there were like...
10:00.
10:00 at night, yes. And they had very short breaks, like 10, 15 minutes during that entire day, right? With, so we worked really hard and I think we were all pretty tired when we got back, but it was well worth it. And just emphasize a little bit more that they'll be coming in, the periods of time to check on us and to talk with us, is that correct?
Yes, I get choked up when I think about. So they are planning on coming out here in March, April. So we're, and they'll be going to each of the nine community areas, you know, throughout the country. By the way, we're the furthest west and then the next one for this, west before us is Houston and everything else is east of the Mississippi. But they will be taking their time to come out and actually do a physical inventory and meet with us and our partners at that time.
And Pam, once more, congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, tell them to visit in August, that's, sure. Okay, with that, then the next meeting is the retreat, as we've said. So we'll all see you at the retreat. This meeting is adjourned.